Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting and special committee of the whole meeting. I kindly called this special city council meeting to order and asked...
No, regular meeting.
Oh, excuse me, regular meeting to order and ask the clerk to please take the role.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Darah Burkhardt?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Jim Radecki?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simonian?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We have a full house tonight. All of you are probably aware that the City of Geneva flag is flying at half-staff and will do so through this evening. That is in honor of a young man, Hunter William Shodine, who passed away on the 17th of this month. Sad indeed. As all of you know, I ask permission of the family first if I can lower the flag to honor their loved one, and I was granted that permission. And I expressed to the Shodine family, certainly Craig and Pam and the extended family, that our hearts are heavy with their loss, that we share in their grief, and that we stand ready to assist them in the difficult days ahead. So, if I may, just begin this meeting with a brief moment to recognize their loss and to honor the life of Hunter. Thank you very much. Pledge of allegiance, ladies and gentlemen. We begin tonight by asking none other... Let's search in the room here. Rita Cruz to please lead us in the pledge. Just because you don't look up here doesn't mean we don't call you, right?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rita. Item three, ladies and gentlemen, public hearings, special items and presentations. We have with us our distinguished Director of Community Development, David DeGroot, and our Building Commissioner, Dustin Schulte, to share with us an update regarding the zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome, Dustin.
Good evening. Mayor, members of the city council, for those of you that have not met me yet, I'm Dustin Schulte, I'm the building commissioner. We were given the task that each department would do presentation on our day-to-day activities and stuff that we're involved in. Under the Community Development Department, we've got all these items that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. We've given presentations on everything in the Planning Division, and we're down to two left for the building side, property maintenance, which I'm guessing will be in the spring. And then tonight, we're going to do... I'm currently given the role as the liaison for the zoning board of appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals is made up of... It's a seven-member board of Geneva residents appointed by the mayor. The terms are five years in length. Their responsibility is to hear and decide appeals from administrative decisions on zoning matters and grant or deny variations requested from our zoning regulations. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi-judicial body, so the decisions they make are final administrative decisions. So, that's why you don't ever see any of those cases here, because they don't recommend. So, any appeals would go to the circuit court and not to the city council. Section 11147 of the zoning ordinance gives the authority to the zoning board of appeals to do an appeal for an administrative decision either made by myself or the community development director. Gives them the ability to appeal a decision that we've made in response to meeting... Our interpretation of something within the zoning ordinance. They have 45 days. Once we give them a formal response, they have 45 days to do that appeal. The appeal, then, they give us all the information that we need to be able to hold a public hearing. That is done then at the next meeting that's available. So, not only administrative decisions, which in the 10 years that I've been here, we've only had one case that went before the zoning board of appeals as far as administrative decision. 99% of the time, it's variations. This gives that board the authority to grant or deny variations. And variations are basically... Our set zoning ordinance has specific rules, and the applicant or property owner can't meet the specific rules. So, there are different things that they can ask for as far as a variation. So, in our zoning ordinance, we have nine different things that you see up here that a variation can be applied for. There are some things that people want that the zoning ordinance just doesn't allow them to be changed. From maximum height for either a fence or a structure to lot coverage. We have lot coverage standards in each of our districts, whether it's residential or commercial. There's times where their project makes them exceed that, and so they go to the zoning board to seek relief. So, this chart kind of gives you an activity. So, it's basically from 2003 to 2011 is the darker brown, I'm sorry, gray, and the blue is after 2013. We had a section there from 2011 to 2013 that we had absolutely no cases come before the zoning board. As you can see, it's pretty busy since 2013. We've met quite a few times. There was some time there in the middle that we didn't know whether we still needed to keep that body or what the future was going to entail. So, the state statute lays out four standards that the zoning board has to review the applications request. So, the four standards are the following. First one's reasonable return. That's basically saying that without granting this relief, they cannot have a reasonable return on their investment or on their property. Another way that people have looked at it is reasonable use, that because they can't build, you know, five feet closer to the lot line, that it limits their use of the property. So, the first one's reasonable return or reasonable use. The next one's unique hardship or practical difficulty. That would be, you know, the shape, topography, something with how the lots laid out, that they can't meet the bulk regulations, and so they're looking... They're trying to find a way that they can get that to work. Three, character of the area. That's basically just what they're asking for is going to fit in with everything else in the area. Number four is minimum variation. So, you know, if they need a six-foot tall fence, but they ask for an eight-foot, they need to just be asking for the six-foot if that's going to meet what they're trying to do. Keep in mind that when the zoning board reviews these standards, they have to meet all four to be able to grant that variance. You can't... You gotta hit 'em all. You can't skip one. So, a bunch of this goes in on staff time that goes ahead of time to deter this if there's a way to make it work without going through these extra steps. So, we start with a pre-application meeting that they usually meet with myself and sometimes the Planning Division. We discuss what the requirements are. Is there a way to modify what they want to do to be able to make it meet? Review the standards with them, explain, okay, these are the things you're going to have to prove or talk to as far as when you make the presentation. We go over the requirements. We go over the procedure and timelines that it's going to take, because it takes usually 60 days once it gets started, because it's a public hearing. So, once they decide that's the route they want to take, that they don't want to change their project, or they think this is the best use of what they want to do, we have an application form. The council approved a deposit system in the last six months, so we now accept a deposit and a $250 application fee. We require applied a survey, some renderings of what it's going to look like, if it ends up being an addition or something of that nature. A lot of them will give pictures to explain what it is that they're looking to do, a letter of intent of what type of variations they would like to have, what they're seeking, written evidence for each of those standards. They have to respond to each standard separately. And then they also give us a list, along with envelopes, for all the property owners within 250 feet, because a public hearing will be held, so that we notify those residents that are around. So, here's a picture of our checklist that's included in there to help them speed up their process, so they know what they need to give us to limit the number of trips that they're bringing stuff to City Hall. We also give them the schedule and deadlines, on what date they have to give us the information for us to be able to do our part and turn it around, and when to be able to hit the next scheduled meeting, no different than the planning commission. So, once we get that application and all that documentation in, myself, the city planner, the director of community development, we all sit down and meet and discuss, is this a full, complete packet? Have they given us everything? Have they answered all the questions that are necessary to be able to move forward? Once we have that, then we'll prepare the public hearing, or the public hearing notice, and we'll get that to the paper. And then we will also start the letters to the property owners. We'll get a sign up in their yard. We'll post the agenda, just like any other meeting that the city holds. We'll visit the site. We'll take our own pictures for staff. We'll also do a staff report and analysis. We'll also look at it. We'll also give our responses as far as each of those four standards. That is also sent to the applicant prior to the meeting, and the members of the ZBA also get that prior to the meeting. So, once the meeting starts, the applicant has a chance to present their question from the zoning board. There's testimony that can be given by the public, either for or against. They can also send myself written testimony. I have read stuff into the record at prior meetings. There's a chance for rebuttal, some staff questions. The staff, they will ask staff their report on how they feel that they've met the standards, if there's anything new from what was presented compared to what was submitted. Any questions then from the board? And then the public hearing is closed. Action is required within 90 days of that hearing. 95% of the time, it is voted on that evening. They have to, when they make a motion, they have to include the finding of facts for each of those four standards, and then be able to... To be able to vote or deny a request, a variation. So... I think I skipped one here. All right, so, once a variation is approved, it's then required to be recorded with the county, and it runs with the land, not with the property owner. And then, once that's done, then a building permit can be issued, and that's about it. Are there any questions?
Questions, Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Dustin. Curious, what's the approval-denial rate roughly? And would you guess in terms of...
My guess would be probably about 95% of the time it's approved and 5% it's not. And the reason for that is because we are coaching and meeting with these applicants ahead of time, you know, saying, you know, either your case is not strong enough, it's up to you whether you still want to go through with it. But more or less, the reason that that is that way is because of coaching and all the work that's done ahead of time.
Right, which is good. The variance which runs with the land, so this is project-specific? If they can build three feet from the lot line in this one instance, it doesn't necessarily mean they can build something else three feet from the lot line.
Correct. Their request is, if in that case, their request would be a three-foot setback, regardless of what the project ends up being, as long as it meets the rest of the other bulk regulations, as long as it meets that three-foot setback, that current property owner or any future property owner, they would be allowed to do it. So, it is not project-specific as far as this is the porch they want to build, or this is the garage they want to build. It's the variation on the bulk regulation. So, a three-foot setback relief is a three-foot setback.
Okay, so that's for anything they do in the future?
Correct.
I... Thank you.
Sure.
I was thinking it was the other way. Is there any particular or specific training for board members of the ZBA, or is it in-house and tutelage under you and...
We've done some in-house training. They also have to do the Open Meetings Act training, but I believe... And we've done one other training this last fall or the previous fall. So, we've been able to have two trainings for them. One, I believe, was for all city groups that we had over at Flora Fona, I believe. And then we've also had one that Attorney Radovich gave to the members a couple of years ago.
Well, thank you. I'd recommend anyone in the public that, you know, some of these appointed commissions, like the zoning board of appeals, are a good way to learn about the making of the sausage of the city, and I'd recommend watching sausage. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings.
Do you see any weaknesses in the system, any improvements that you'd recommend we
I can't think of anything at this moment. There hasn't been any discussion on any code changes that we would recommend to you guys. So, at this point, I think it's working. The hard thing is it's inconsistent. We could have, you know, some where it's every two weeks, or we could go six months and not have a case. So, that may be the only thing, is the amount of time between, you know, makes it more difficult for the members, because they're not doing it every single week or every two weeks. But other than that, I mean, it seems to work out. There hasn't been any issues.
Thank you.
Alderman Maladra.
So, just out of curiosity, how much... So, on average, how much time does staff put into...
I think when we did the fee rate, I believe it was like 13 hours of staff time.
Hours perhaps.
You know, and that's kind of an average. There's some that, you know, may have been less, and there's some that...
Yeah.
There was a whole lot more.
Yeah.
So, but on an average, 13 hours.
Thanks.
Hey, Dustin, just... Alderman Bruno asked a question about how perpetual that variation may be for a property, but it is also subject to other requirements, bulk requirements.
Correct.
So, the fact that you may get a three-foot variance, there are other factors that might go in depending on what your building permit application comes in. It could be the mass of the building would make a difference, that you wouldn't be granted to do something, or...
Understood. Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments or questions for Commissioner Schulte? Thank you, Dustin. Item four, amendments to the agenda. Any amendments this evening? Alderman Kilburg?
I'd ask to be... Pull 11D from the agenda for some further discussion.
D as in David?
We can do that when we get to the omnibus.
11D.
Right, that should really come under item five, but it's just so noted. Yeah, so noted, exactly. Any other recommended amendments? Hearing none? Okay. Item five, the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine unless a member of this council wishes to remove an item for new and relevant information. Alderman Kilburg recommends item 11D. Anyone else? Save for 11D being removed, items 11A, B, and C are considered... Excuse me. Items 6, 7, 8, 11A, B, and C are considered consent and can be considered with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Sino. Questions or comments? Mr. Clerk.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Darah Burkhardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We jump down to item 10, municipal bills for payment, and we kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $4,395,720.83.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as read.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Radecki. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Darah Burkhardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We skip down to item 11D as in David. It is to approve resolution number 2016-74, authorizing a bid award and contract to Aurora Sign Company in the amount not to exceed $56,886 for city identification signage project. This item was removed by Alderman Kilburg. I'll ask for the motion to put it on the floor.
So moved.
So moved by Marx, seconded by Kilburg, and Alderman Kilburg, you have the floor.
I apologize, I wasn't here on Monday evening for the committee of the whole meeting when this was discussed, but in looking at it, I guess I feel as though that the pricing on these signs seems to be so attractive that we want to... That we might want to consider being a little bit more aggressive as to the purchases of these signs. We're looking at about 40% of what was the initial estimate on the arterial signs and about 35% of the estimated cost on the secondary signs. I think that essentially, I'm certainly in favor of approving the purchase of the four that was indicated by staff. I'm... I guess I would suggest that what we do is we give staff the opportunity to go back and see if they could get additional arterial signs, especially the six largest. That would be another four signs potentially purchased, along with the two secondary. And again, or any combination. I think that with these kinds of... With these types of numbers, I think we should be more aggressive, because those numbers may not be there next year or the year after. And originally, we're talking about a half a million dollars on these signs over a four-year period. If we can accelerate it and save money in the process, I think it's something that we should certainly consider and try to do if we can get the winning bidder, which was Aurora Sign, to agree to provide that same pricing for additional signs. And I'm saying, maybe we want to go up to a half, $150,000 in purchase. I think we're at $56,000.
Yeah, the budget was $102,000.
Okay, $102,000. Maybe we go to $150,000, because I think in the long term, this is certainly going to save the city money.
Do you want to provide some additional information, staff?
No, I guess if we're going to $150,000, where are we taking the other $48,000?
Well, that's a good question. I guess I'd ask staff, what was originally budgeted?
I guess...
I think if we were going to do it over four years, then at...
What council could do is authorize up to $150,000 as the max, and we can see how the budget goes, because part of it is out of the infrastructure fund, and if there's any additional funds in there as we get through the year, we can always do that. At this point, I just don't know, because all of those projects aren't completed.
Fair enough. I'm just saying, I think that this is an opportunity that we should explore.
Alderman Singer?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. I tend to agree with the direction you're moving towards, but would we not have a concern that this would not have to go up before bid again?
Well, it would be negotiated. No. I think the bid specifications provided for an increase or decrease in the number, so it was really a unit price bid offering. So, you can increase... The quality. The number. Okay. The quantity.
The quantity, yeah. All right, thank you for that explanation.
First statement, Kathleen?
Yes, I'd just like to add one thing, if I may. The sign, the cost for the sign, there'll be additional costs too, on top of just the signs. You'll have, the landscape isn't included. We don't have that priced out yet. And also, if there's permit costs from the state, and then restoration, that's not within the contract if we do something deeper than expected. So, there's some costs that need to be accounted for there, too.
Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. Excluding all the additional costs you just mentioned, on an apples-to-apples comparison, based on Alderman Kilburg's suggestion, if we had purchased all of them now versus over the next four years, do we know what the savings would be?
I'd have to do the calculation for all the signs.
Ballpark?
For all of the signs.
Well, I'm just... Okay, let's take... I mean, do we know what the difference in right now, the $56,886, what it would have been if we... Under the... What we had projected?
We had projected that arterial signs would be $38,385, and that the secondary signs were $32,210. And then there's the tertiary and the historic signs. So, we had a little bit of a different phasing plan than when we actually wrote the spec later. So, we had calculated that we would do four signs the first year at $141,190, based on the estimate. The budget that was provided was less. It was $102,000 was budgeted this year.
Those same four signs?
Well, we just had that much, and we didn't know how much we would achieve until the bids came in.
Okay. What I'm trying to get at is what's the... What would be the overall savings to the city if... And I apologize for asking a question, but I just thought of it after Deed brought this What the overall savings to the city would be for the entire project, doing it now versus waiting four years?
It would be hard to know that, because we wouldn't know what the price is, based on these prices and comparing that to our estimate.
But I'm thinking about based off of estimate, because that's what we budgeted off of, is the estimate correct?
I don't remember how. I think we... I think it's just an amount was given to the project based on available funds.
So, where do we get it?
So we thought the project would be about four twenty, six, seven, oh.
And that's just signs, or is that all in with the, all the other?
No, that didn't include the plantings.
Right. Well, we're going to have those no matter what we do. That's going to be a given. So signage is four twenty, six seventy?
That's what we, if my math is right.
Okay. And I'm just trying to get a ballpark to see, to figure out if it's in our best interest to figure out a way to lock in this price now for all of them and figure out, you know, how to budget for them and save it. So if it's four, if you're talking about four twenty is what we estimated, and if we did it now, it's three twenty, and we can save the city a hundred thousand dollars, it may be in our best interest to lock it in now and then take advantage of that and then figure out, you know, borrow against the electric fund or whatever and stagger it so it saves us the money. I mean, the interest on that is going to be a lot less than, if that's the number, a hundred thousand, I'm just pulling that out of my patootie there, so. But I don't know. But I think, I agree with Alderman Kilburg, if this is a dramatic saving, we should follow up on it and take advantage of it. So.
Yes?
Yeah, I think you're showing about a forty thousand dollar savings if we were to do this over the next three or four years, or at least be a forty thousand dollar savings per year. So I'm just saying, you're right, I think it'd be well over a hundred thousand dollars. And again, you know, a lot of this depends on whether or not Aurora Sign wants to do more at those numbers, but I think it's certainly something that would have merit in staff further exploring because, you know, if you look at the other competitive bids, there was quite a disparity, a significant disparity. And, you know, I just, I don't have the answer. I'm just saying, though, if this is an opportunity, if we, you know, if we want to have some further discussion, staff having some further discussion with the company that had the winning bid, if we can technically do that based on legal counsel's advice, maybe we should be doing that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I mean, the budget or the appropriation is a hundred and two thousand. What could be done tonight with this bid is to go up to a hundred and two thousand with whatever number of signs that figure accommodates.
Can't we amend the budget?
That's not for me to answer because I don't know what's available.
Again, the budget can be amended if you have the money to amend the budget with. And at this point, as I said earlier, I don't know that we are far enough in the budget year to say that we're going to have an extra hundred and fifty, extra three hundred or whatever thousand. So at this point, my recommendation would be that you either authorize up to the budget amount, and we see what we can get done, and then as we progress through the year, if we can do more, then Kathleen would come back and ask for authorization to do more and amend the budget.
I would also lend to the discussion the idea that it might not physically be possible to get all that construction done in the construction season prior to the close of the fiscal year.
That's right. My understanding is that they're going to be starting construction based on conversation I had with Mr. Lannert, that they're going to be starting construction this fall, and it'll continue even with these four signs probably into the spring, so.
That's correct.
So, you know, if it was a few thousand dollars, it'd be one thing, but if we're looking at a hundred, potentially a hundred thousand dollar savings here over the term of the project, you know, that's real money. I would, I'd agree with Ms. Dawkins' recommendation then that we take that type of an approach that she's suggesting. If you'd want to outline that, I'll put it in the form, if you want to restate that, and I'd put that in the form of a motion.
I will give it a shot.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. The motion would remain the same, save for line two, which would be in an amount not to exceed one hundred and two thousand dollars.
And we know that there's other expenses that gives you full flexibility.
Right.
But your resolution is to enter into a contract with that company, so you're saying...
Not to exceed, so it's not a set price? It cannot go above that price?
Okay.
So that would be an amendment to the main motion. Is that your amendment, then?
Yes.
Is there a second on the amendment? Seconded by Marx. Questions on the amendment or comments? Mr. City Attorney, you want to say anything?
Well, are you treating this as an amendment to the main motion?
Yes. All right. Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. If they're going to, if it's going to take through our budget to construct these signs to begin with, at least the first group up to a hundred and two thousand, does it not behoove us to contract with them for the entire amount as we roll into the following budget and adjust accordingly to take advantage of this? Because if we don't contract with them after four signs or whatever the number of signs, these prices can go up dramatically. I mean, isn't it in our best interest to contract if you're telling me that they're not going to get any more than four or five of these done by budget time anyhow? Doesn't it make sense to at least contract for all of them? And the lawyer speaks.
And again, yeah, and I apologize, but again, it's a budget question. It's an appropriation question. Do you have the funds in which to support that contract? In order to contract, you have to have the monetary backing for it to occur.
So can we put terms in the contract that reflect that? It has to be approved in the following budget, and then that way we are...
Well, if I can, Kathleen, the bid specs and the response to the bid allowed the city to increase or decrease the units, correct?
It allowed us to decrease the units.
Not increase the units?
I think...
It was a whole, it was a whole amount, right? Well, let me restate that, Kathleen. The proposal, the bid, was for a much larger number of signs or scope of signs, correct?
No, we just went out for bid for four signs.
For four signs.
Yes.
So your bid...
And we were able to lower the number if the price came in too high.
But not to increase the number.
I have to read.
Steph is reviewing that right now. Alderman Marx, Alderman Rodecky?
Well, I guess just a question, I think what we may be getting at here is we really want a multi-year contract. You know, maybe we need to set this out for bid to get a multi-year contract to see if we can get some savings there. I don't know if that's, now, the attorney's going to come in and...
Yeah, I'm sorry, here I go again, but...
No, it's okay.
Your appropriation is an annual appropriation. There's only a few exceptions where you can do multi-year contracts. Garbage contracts, police, electric contracts because you have an enterprise fund, but you're not, you have an annual appropriation or slash budget, and that's your constraint as a non-home rural community.
Alderman Rodecky?
Got that. I guess, just sitting here listening to this fascinating conversation about this stuff, perhaps the appropriate thing right now, I think the council wants to give some direction to staff that we would like to, at this favorable price, if it's, if we have the ability, and what's the best way for us to potentially leverage that, whether it's a budget amendment, whether, what the bid process allows us to do, maybe ask staff to come back and tell us what our options are, maybe in consult with the city attorney and city staff to see what's best...
Well, Kathleen, is there a time limit on the bid?
Yes.
Well, we'd approve these two and then ask them to come, I think, are these four?
Yeah, I think...
Prove these, move forward, but ask them to come back with...
To add complication, yet perhaps clarity to this, the consideration under the special committee of the whole could very well be our answer to quite many things. So with that said...
You still have a motion pending?
We have an amendment on the floor, and it's been seconded by, I believe, Alderman Marx. So on the amendment, take a dramatic pause here for a...
Legal opinion?
Legal review.
I don't think that has anything to do with it, just the estimate of quantity.
But there is a thirty-day limit.
Yeah, I think these bids were good for thirty days.
After opening...
Right, we have to award within thirty days.
Thirty days, so I don't think you want to jeopardize that. I don't see any language that's popping out at me that talks about adjustments of the quantity. It's, you know, the basis for the award was the city was requesting a bid on all four signs as described in the bid documents. And the final allocation of funding will solidify the number of signs constructed during the budget year. So my interpretation would be that it's, now, my interpretation would be it's that the city could decrease that four, but it's four, there's not, it doesn't say to increase.
In light of that, I would withdraw my second if Rich would be prepared to withdraw his motion, and then I would suggest we take action on 11D as presented, and then ask staff to further investigate to see if we can get some type of assurances from the vendor to indicate to us what their intentions are moving forward because I would think that the tendency is you want to stay with the same vendor when you're doing signs because of a commonality and, you know, the same types of materials and all the things that go into these that you want a common look. I would ask staff to explore it further with the vendor and see what they might be prepared to do to give us some assurances that these prices aren't going to raise dramatically over the next two or three years.
So Alderman Kilburg withdraws the amendment, the seconder concurs with the draw, the original motion remains, which is fifty-six thousand, excuse me, not to exceed fifty-six thousand, eight eighty-six, with the caveat that additional work and communication be done between professional staff and our friends at Aurora Sign Company. Any additional comments, questions? Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Motion passes, the nine affirmative votes are one nay vote. New business? Anyone? Tom Medias. Alderman Burkhardt?
I just wanted to note the Fox Valley Marathon passed through Geneva on Sunday. Seems like another great success with three thousand runners on a beautiful Sunday. I helped block traffic on Peyton Street, and there were some frustrated drivers, and I just want to say to Geneva residents, I understand, you know, that frustration, you're trying to get home, you're trying to get to church, trying to get to work on a Sunday morning, but I hope going forward that, you know, we remember that this marathon is a really great event for Geneva and the area. I mean, I ran into Alderman Simonian Saturday night, and we both noted how many people were in downtown Geneva. I don't think there were, those were probably not marathon runners out that late, but their friends and family, and I think that's probably quite an economic boost to Geneva and St. Charles over the weekend. So again, I want to thank Geneva residents for their patience on Sunday morning dealing with those detours, but it's a great event, and I think we're really lucky to have it, so, thanks.
I didn't see you because I ran that thing, and, so, thanks for your support. Anything else? If not, a motion to adjourn the council meeting is in order. Alderman Simonian makes the motion. Alderman, is it Marx made the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned from the council meeting. We'll turn the microphones off briefly and begin the special committee of the whole meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting of the special committee of the whole meeting, there's no objection. Hearing none, this meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the Aldermen are present. We have one item of business this evening that is item two A. Consider draft ordinance amending Title I, Chapter Nine of the Geneva City Code pertaining to the imposition of a places for eating tax in the city of Geneva, Illinois. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Microphones, I think, is what he's the magician there.
Good God. Start over?
I showed up again.
Item two A was motioned by Alderman Singer to consider ordinance amending Title I, Chapter Nine of the Geneva City Code pertaining to the imposition of places for eating tax. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Alderman Marx makes the second. Just for clarification purposes, as I believe we all know, tonight's consideration is simply to advance this consideration to the council meeting on October third. If indeed it's successful this evening and again on October third, the discussion regarding allocation of anticipated revenues would be part and parcel to the overall budget process. So tonight is just a matter of enacting this ordinance and advancing it to the council for consideration. And as we all know, by reading the document, it would take effect if the council so determines on October third. On January one, prior to that date, we'd be holding at least two open houses for discussion and, for lack of a better word, education with respect to our places for eating throughout the city. So, questions or comments? Seeing none? Oh, Alderman Simonian?
We're getting out that easy. Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. First of all, I want to find out if, have we notified the, in any way, shape, or form, the restaurants or bars about this meeting tonight? No?
Do you want to address that, or no?
I've spoken with several. I have advised them that this wasn't going to be discussed at a committee of the whole meeting this evening. I know that many, well, I shouldn't speak for the chamber, but I know that the chamber has had conversations with several as well. I did explain to anyone and everyone who I spoke to that our consideration was with respect to advancing this to the council on the third, and if, in fact, it was successful, nothing would be done until January one to allow for that discussion period in between, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just have this eerie feeling that, I don't know, what do we have, a hundred and forty-seven restaurants? And I look in the audience, and I don't see any folks that this impacts, so I just am concerned that they're being communicated to. Another question is, the one percent that the owners filing tax returns may retain, that's one percent of the two percent?
It's one percent of the, so, yes.
Total receipts.
So if it's two thousand dollars that they have to remit in the tax, they could keep twenty dollars, they would subtract that off of what they remit and keep that...
And the two thousand is the two percent?
The two percent.
So it's one percent of two percent of two, or two tenths of one percent of the whole? Yeah, I mean, I just, because the first time I read this, I read it as fifty percent of the two percent, that one percent of the two percent.
It's one percent of the tax.
But it's of the two percent getting, it's one percent of the two percent collected.
Correct.
Okay.
And they would just, like I said, that would just be a subtraction that they would keep, and that would run with the life of the tax, and that's to go for any kind of expenses or anything that they might incur in implementing the tax.
In our last meeting, and I don't know if this is how you planned on addressing it, but I had two issues. One was the, some sort of a dollar amount, a cost associated with the changeover, because all of them are going to have to change their menus and communication pieces and everything with regards to anything that's got the tax listed. So I don't know if this is the intent to do that... So I don't know if this is the intent to do that or is this the intent to administer it?
Well, it's both. It's to help them on the front end in implementing it and then for the life of the tax, they can retain that for any other administration cost that they have.
Okay. And then, second, I'm opposed to where we're going to allocate this money. I had mentioned I'd like to see it in a special fund for non-general fund expenses or non-budgetary items, those one-off scenarios having to do with equipment and/or infrastructure that are not items that we would normally budget for. And I would like to see it go in there and be managed separately versus being managed like the hotel motel tax or put into the general fund. And then lastly, that October third meeting, whatever it is, I'd like to see, make sure we communicate to all these folks. Let them know what's happening. So they're aware of this and we can get some input.
To your first point, as Attorney Radovich mentioned earlier, we operate on an annual fiscal budget. Each and every year, we can determine as a council where these monies are invested, whether it be in the general fund, whether it be a special fund that we allocate accordingly. So that's discussions, you know, really in essence, take place later this fall. Assuming that, we advance this after October third. We already have estimates with respect to what this tax might yield. As we all know, in the executive summary, we're looking at approximately a half a million dollars from January one through April thirtieth. And we're looking at approximately one point five million for a full fiscal year. So to allocate those funds how we see fit based on priorities, based on needs, we have the luxury of doing that with obviously the participation of the public as well.
Yeah, but see, I agree with what you just said, but I disagree with where, how I want this money to be. I want it allocated separately from the get-go.
But that's part of the budget process.
Well...
That would boil down to a majority vote.
Yes and no. It goes into the big pot, the ninety million dollar pot. And then we, and I don't want it going into the ninety million dollar pot. I want it to go in a separate pot to be managed separately.
Like an enterprise fund?
Enterprise fund or whatever.
Well, again, that's a discussion for the budget process. That's the hard part, so.
But...
For what reason?
Because I don't want to get lost in, back into the overall budget and then this thing...
That's not, I'm asking, so let's say we set aside this special fund. What's its purpose? What's its intent? What's it geared for?
I just said...
So I create a special fund for these types of expenses or I create a special fund for... You can't just say I create a special fund because I don't trust the council to spend the money wisely.
No, no, it should be on those one-off scenarios, i.e., you know, you got to buy a piece of equipment, infrastructure projects, those kinds of things that are not normal budgeted, necessarily budgeted items, that are situations that, you know, here's a perfect example tonight. You know, we have an opportunity to save over a hundred thousand dollars. We don't have the money. You know, it's like someone saying, you know, but I bought it on sale. Well, you're going to go broke saving money. I mean, this is just the opposite where we have an opportunity to save money, but we don't have the money to save. So this would be one of those opportunities where we had money to go ahead and allocate to this and save the city money. This is what, what happened tonight is exactly, to me, what that fund would help to do. Is take advantage of situations that we normally could not take advantage of because we don't have the budgeted dollars or an opportunity or, and/or a crisis situation. You know, something happened.
Well, so to that end, I don't, can I, so to that end, so could we go for a year and choose not to spend that money?
Sure. Why not?
So then we can levy this tax and choose to just build up a, you know, a fund or something like that?
There's a line item in business called retained earnings. It would be retained earnings and we'd push it off to the following year because maybe the next year we might need three million dollars and maybe we might have to buy a new fire truck. Or maybe for a million-two or whatever may be the case that makes sense to pull it out of this versus...
So the only reason as that is, as a council, we seem to be very cautious when we talk about raising revenue, whether it's a fee or whether it's a tax or whatever. And so I'm curious to know how we would approach the public and say, I want to tax you for things that I'm not sure about. I want to tax you so that I can have money in case I need it. I'm fine with it, but that kind of goes against the way we've talked about a bunch of it. We want to bring up, we want to bring up this revenue increase for very specific expenses. And I think that by tossing it into the general fund, there's umpteen gazillion things we could spend it on. But to your point, it's basically we'd be pissing it away most of the time.
Well, yeah, I mean, it would fall, it would fall through all the little cracks and just be add-ons. You know?
I don't think so, though, Alderman. I don't think that would happen. In fact, it doesn't happen now. We have an opportunity throughout the budget process to identify the revenues through the general fund and how to allocate those revenues. The enterprise funds, as we all know, remains enterprise funds. We can't borrow from electric to pay for, you know, we can't do that legally. What I've heard throughout the course of debate amongst business owners, amongst chamber members, amongst Economic Development Commission members and amongst ordinary citizens is, let me know first what you're going to invest the money in and then I'll let you know whether I support that. What we've heard from the restaurateurs, at least the ones I've spoken to, is we know there's needs out there, whether it be infrastructure, whether it be capital goods, et cetera. And there's some other stuff available as well that we can invest those in. But my fear is if we collect the money and use it as a, lack of a better word, slush fund or rainy day fund.
But let's take, let's take tonight's example. Do you consider this, do you consider using four hundred thousand dollars to save a hundred thousand dollars out of quarter-quarter slush fund or not be able to take advantage of that because it's in the budget?
But that was my statement made earlier, that during the committee of the whole meeting, we could very well have an answer with respect to depending on Aurora Signs.
Oh, but that's Aurora Signs and that's for the budget. But let's fast forward this tape a year from now and we, the next Aurora Sign opportunity comes up where we can save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars because of the fact that there's an opportunity for some... But we, again, we can't do anything because we don't have the money because it hasn't been budgeted.
Oh, no, no, we can do a budget transfer. Tonight's debate was we have no money to transfer irrespective of the fund we want to transfer it from. We can't transfer from electric, that's illegal. We cannot transfer from an enterprise.
No, but we can borrow against it.
It's the advice of council that we do not do that. I'm not telling ratepayers we're borrowing money from what they've paid for electric to build signs. There's no way in hell I'm doing that.
Well, I mean, it's been brought up to us many times to borrow against those funds, so this isn't new.
More capital goods in the funds.
Yeah, but still...
There's been recommendations that are quite frankly off the mark in terms of borrowing from enterprise fund.
Okay.
That skirts, I believe, all sorts of ethical and legal issues.
So let's fast forward this tape and let's take your...
Let's not. The discussion tonight is do we advance this ordinance to the council meeting on October third?
And my...
Discuss it in a budget process how to invest those funds.
And my angst is, I don't have a problem advancing this, but I do have a problem with the allocation of those dollars and where those dollars are going to be held.
That's where the budget process comes in.
But we keep separate funds now.
Yes, we do keep separate funds now.
So we can set up a fund that we want this to go into? We can make that motion now.
During the budget process, it's not like we have ninety million dollars that's all in one big pot and we start allocating it out. We have various revenues that are attributed to various funds.
Thirty-six different funds.
So the idea is here is that during the budget process, you would see what the greatest needs are for that upcoming year. And we know some of those needs are capital equipment. We know that for a fact. So during the budget process, if you think you're going to get one point five million in Places for Eating, you might say we want a million of that to go into the capital equipment fund. And the other five hundred thousand, you may have another greatest needs that comes out of your strategic planning and your prioritization that you want the rest of it to go to. Or you may want to put some of it towards reserves for those rainy days or for that day when a project comes up that you don't know. But to sit here tonight and decide whether or not you're going to pass an ordinance to implement this tax because you don't quite know where you want, how you want that money dedicated, again, that's part of the budget process is because that's where you look at where your needs are and what revenues you have coming in and how those revenues are going to be spent.
So what you're telling me then is we do have money to pay for those signs if we take it out of the reserve?
If you choose to go against council policy, correct, which right now we're at twenty-five percent in our reserves, which is what the policy is the council set, you can always do that. That's always a council prerogative to amend the budget to take it out of reserves.
Okay. Then we either, you can't use, you can't say you have reserves you can take it out of and then come back and say the council's policy is twenty-five, to maintain twenty-five percent. I mean, it's either, it's either we're going to follow, we're going to follow the policy or we're...
But that's the truth. The council policy that we all adopted on this council was to achieve a twenty-five percent rainy day fund, for lack of a better word. This council, the very men and women in this room, agreed to spend some four hundred thousand dollars on the development of a new parking lot. We dipped below that twenty-five percent and then we all looked at each other and said, what the hell have we done? Now we've built it back up to twenty-five percent. We have the luxury, the flexibility and the authority to say, let's borrow here because we know there's revenue opportunities to replace later. That's absolutely kosher.
So I think, I think what you said is every year we're going to, we're going to be able to say, here's X amount of dollars coming from the Places for Eating Tax. And at the beginning of every year, we as a council get to decide to which funds we want
Exactly.
to direct that money. And if we wanted to, we could direct all of that money to reserves or if we wanted to, we could direct all of that money to fire trucks or whatever. And it would change on an annual basis based, just as our needs change on an annual basis.
It could also change midstream, as we all know. You know, we have quarterly budget reports. If this council chooses, you know what? Let's redirect X to Y because it's an opportunity, for example, to save Z in terms of a purchase of an item. Sure.
Right. So as long as it's a, so what I meant when I said otherwise, we would just piss it away. I didn't mean to be insulting or anything, but I had a, I had a vision of our ninety thousand dollar bucket would grow by that whatever we bring in. And so we'd be at budget time or we'd be in a situation like this and we'd be saying, is there a way I can take advantage of this opportunity? And we'd be saying, well, no, it's too early to tell because all of our money is spoken for. We could choose every year to take twenty percent of that or fifty percent of that and stick it in a, an opportunity fund if we choose to.
Essentially, it would likely go into the general fund reserves. But we know it's stated in a public meeting that you're putting X number of dollars in reserves for a future opportunity.
Bump that up above twenty-five percent and then we could talk about pulling it down, which would bring it back down to twenty-five percent. But we could set up a Places for Eating Fund where we have to make the actual transfers out of there where we could track every dollar. That would be my preference, that we have the fund that says Places for Eating Tax and then we know exactly where the council, where we move it to if people ask us because it is an additional tax. But then that gets back to my question before. So, okay, great. On paper, it goes into a thing called Places for Eating Fund, but what's the purpose of that fund? Well, it could be capital improvements. It's the same thing, it's the same thing we're saying. It's every year we're going to decide what the purpose of that fund is. You've got to make an actual physical movement out of that fund like we do now. We have to take things out of funds to move it into general funds or whatever. There's actual votes that are specifically taken. So you like the... I like that checks and balances, the stop.
Yep.
Okay. I like the checks and balances.
Either that or I don't have a problem putting a hundred percent of it into the reserves.
Don Cummings?
I, you know, everyone's, it sounds like a lot of people are looking at this potential million and a half dollars versus the ninety million dollars. I'm looking at this million and a half versus the four and a half roughly, four and a half million dollars we bring into general funds from property taxes and, each year. And four and a half million dollars, the million and a half dollars is thirty-three percent of the property taxes we're allocating towards the general fund. And I'm not looking for answers now, but taxes to cities, to the citizens of Geneva are really, really high. And one of the things I'd like people to at least turn over in their heads for a few weeks is the idea that perhaps we are, we are going to a Places for Eating Tax that becomes somewhat of a substitute for the taxes that are, that are really pushing hard on the backs of the citizens of Geneva. Maybe, maybe not the entire million and a half, maybe five hundred thousand, maybe a million. I don't, I don't know. But at three, three point one, three point two percent of our property value getting taxed away is pretty heavy. And perhaps this is a way to go outside of Geneva for a certain percentage of that and lessen the impact of the citizens, on the citizens of Geneva. So just one more idea on how to spend the money rather than looking for a way to spend it, maybe looking for a way to save some taxpayers some money.
I think all great discussion with respect to the budget process. But we haven't been looking for ways to spend. We've agreed as a council that we know there are specific areas where we can invest that money. But again, all part of the budget discussion. I agree. And that's going to be a healthy and exciting discussion. Additional comments, questions? Mr. Kilburg?
One thing to make this a lot more valuable to the restaurants and those businesses that are involved, it'll be impacted directly with, and again, a lot of the businesses that have voiced objection are located in downtown or in the downtown. And I guess one thing that we could look at would be waiving or eliminating the SSA, which is about two hundred and fifteen thousand on an annual basis. And that, you know, I think some of the resistance that we might run into, I think that would dissipate if in fact the SSA would be, SSA one, which is two hundred and twelve thousand dollars budgeted for the current year. And again, that way, the restaurant owner then is deferring really their tax that they're paying out of their pocket and their profits from SS, to defray SSA one really to their customers then that are benefiting from the atmosphere, the ambiance of downtown Geneva. And I think that as we move this forward, I think that would be something that at least maybe we would want to give some consideration to.
Mr. Rodecky?
Well, but in that vein, I think it's also important to remember that a lot of this discussion was predicated on the fact that we were deferring a downtown business tax and that we're looking for alternate sources of revenue that would apply to the entire tax base. So, you know, doing this is a, I think, an olive branch in an effort to spread that unhappiness more throughout the entire city and to put it more, as Alderman Cummings said, on the, on the backs of the people visiting the city as well. So I'd be hesitant to go that route quickly because I think this is an effort to spare them already, but certainly that's maybe a point for later discussion to see how this goes. You know, in the words of Alderman Dakota, we're getting drunk on the wine before the grapes have come in. So...
Yes, we are.
We tend to get way down ahead of ourselves before we get, you know, the business at hand, I think, sometimes, so. Thank you.
Also, I think, I think that it's important that everybody understand this is not a tax on those businesses the way that the SSA is. I know that there's the administrative cost and the cost of having to update your systems. Personally, I believe all these systems are already upgrade, updatable because the state changes taxes. That, you know, they have to, they have to change the cost of a lot of things in their systems. And I don't view that as being overly burdensome, but that there is the administrative end of things. But it's still not a tax on the business. It's a, it's a tax that they pass, that passes through the business.
Is it a user tax?
What? Yeah.
Very much.
Yeah, but it's not a tax on, you know, restaurant tax. I just want to be clear about that. But the SSA is a tax on restaurant tax.
What I would say then, and this would be tax relief then for those that are involved with SSA one. I mean, they would perceive this as, as a reduction in their taxes because it's something that those businesses won't have to defray, which I think would certainly be palatable. I don't think any of them would object to that.
Right. I agree with that. They certainly would not.
Anyone else? We have a motion? We have a second? Mr. Clerk? I have trouble you to take the role. Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Vera Burghardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Motion passes with the nine affirmative votes and one nay vote. This matter will be considered at the October third city council meeting. Not to appear on the consent agenda, of course, and nor would it if it passed unanimously. It's obviously two important issues. New business? New business for the committee? Anything? Homecoming week? Alderman Simonean?
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you who attended the History Museum barbecue charity, I just want to say